All members are present and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Comments from the public?
Who's this?
Dan Wells.
Hey, Dan.
29 Elmwood Street.
Yep.
I've read a report about the legal opinions that were proposed by on the bylaw changes that were put forward by the Police Commission. I'd like to direct some comments to the selectmen as a result. I want to declare upfront that law enforcement, I know, is a challenging and important public service. It deserves a great deal of respect. On the few occasions I had any dealings with our Old Sable Police Department, I've found them to be competent, professional, and special. Now, I retired a few years ago after a 35-year career in human resources. I was at some corporations, Pfizer, Colgate, Palmolive would stand out. It's two that you would understand and know. I was directly involved in overseeing and conducting investigations when there are complaints about mistreatment. And I confirm that, in my experience, there was a continuum on the quality of those complaints. Some were founded, some were very much justified and required diligent action. And a lot of them remained in the middle. But one thing I can also assert to you that I understand and we understood that liability is an important concern, irrelevant. The liability was never the essential reason why you undertook an investigation. You undertook an investigation because you wanted to be concerned and you were concerned about the safety and well-being of the people in your organization. You also wanted to make sure that people trusted there was effective due process and oversight. Because when trust is eroded, there could be really serious consequences. Now, the United States Army has learned this in Spain. After years of formally having a process where internal complaints about assault and sexual harassment were investigated solely within the unit in which it occurred, they made a change. They made a change in March of last year. It said that when a complaint was filed, it had to be investigated by another brigade outside of that unit. Why? Because there was an erosion of trust among the troops that a fair investigation will occur to the point where no one was even willing to bring matters up because they didn't trust the process. Now, I have to believe that there are many parents who have daughters and sons in the US military today that are sleeping a little bit better because the Army understood this and has made this change. Now, other institutions are out there, like churches, have painfully learned the same truth. Firewalls that limit or prevent external oversight and independent investigations into complaints, no matter how well-intentioned, have potentially serious consequences for everyone involved, especially for those who may have experienced mistreatment. To be clear, I'm not for one second suggesting that drastic, anything drastic like sexual assault has taken place in our police force. Nor am I suggesting that there's bad intent on the part of any official. I am suggesting, though, that from my own experience, surprising and sometimes disturbing things happen in environments where there's high stress, things that would just shock you. And I also can attest from experience, and I think as you all well know from your own experience, all organizations have blind spots. All people have blind spots, particularly what involves themselves and their own organization. It's just a fact of human nature. The fact that five commissioners were elected last fall who ran on an issue of improved oversight for the Police Commission tells me that a substantial number of citizens in our community have concerns about the character and quality of how we undertake investigations in the police department. That was the same reason why the Army made a change. There was an erosion of trust. Now, I'm personally incredulous that any statutes would exist that would prevent common sense measures like independent investigation by police commissioners elected by the public. And if a lawyer tells you that a proposed bylaw to do the community's electoral intent is illegal, I think it's incumbent upon you to go back to an attorney and say, "Tell me what kind of a bylaw would accomplish this intent?" Because that's what our community is asking for. I believe that as elected leaders of Old Sable, the selectmen need to look beyond this question of liability and realize that it's about building greater trust and greater confidence in law enforcement in Old Sable. And doing so is a win for everyone. It's a win for the force. It's a win for the community. It's a win for the entire populace that he represents. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, if anybody on, who's on the hybrid part of the meeting or the virtual part of the meeting would like to comment, they may raise their hand. I'm assuming everybody by now knows how to do that. We will get to you. So if you want to comment, you may raise your hand. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, Claudia, right?
Yes, I'm here.
No, I know, we spoke yesterday.
Yes, thank you for calling me. I appreciate that. But I do want the rest of the committee to hear what I have to say. And I'm here because I have submitted three blight complaints from Bochum Road. 115, 123, and 126. 115 is the pond. And the pond is owned by Chapman's. And a few years ago, he had a barbed wire fence around this pond, which I put a blight complaint in then, and the DEP came down, made him remove the fence because it's illegal to have a fence.
Did you tell me what kind of fence it was? What was that again?
Barbed wire fence.
It was a barbed wire.
Okay, so now he has got a green fence around the pond. And he is piling up shrubs, stumps, branches, trees, all around the pond. I got pictures if anybody would like to see them. And it's a disgrace. I mean, it's really like a disgrace.
Claudia, when you say, when you say "green fence," you mean "natural"?
No, I mean a wire fence.
A wire fence, okay.
Yes, sorry.
Yep.
Again, DEP can be called in and he can be demanded to take that down. Plus, from what I understand, they made him remove the shrubbery and all the pilings he had up around the pond at that time. They made him remove that also. We're talking about wetlands, so you know how that goes. There's all kinds of little rules and regulations about that. 123 Bochum Road, Chapman's owned that. He's also doing the same thing along my daughter's lot line by piling up all this shrubbery. Again, I have pictures if anybody would like to see this. This is what he's doing. Sorry, the pictures aren't as great as can be, but property value-wise, my daughter's getting ready to sell a piece of property there. And, you know, for people to come around the pond and see this crap, and that's what it is, crap for a better... Oh, hi. Yes, it is. It's just not fair. It's not fair. Now, 126 Bochum Road is owned by Mr. Dean. I mean, this is beyond a disgrace. It's totally a crap yard. The town dump at the end of Coulter looked better than what this does. He has been living in this house for seven years without a CO. Mr. McAvicki did send him a letter back in 2019 about the construction of this building and relating to electrical boxes and blah, blah, blah. He's got... This is what my daughter has to look at for seven years. Actually, that's kind of improvement. As you can see, it's unfinished. This is all hanging down. Again, seven years without a CO, people. Come on. This is what my daughter has to look up at on his property along the lot line. Bochum Road, this is from Bochum Road. This, 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 this.
Yep. So, Claudia, yep. So, I called Claudia yesterday. We, I'll get Chris Costa and I'll look at the background on this and especially with regard to Chapman. Just so you know, later in the agenda, I instituted a new blight process.
I saw that.
Yeah. No longer using, we're using a different attorney. And it's a little bit more of a... There are several properties in town that I intend to fully enforce. One of them has gotten to the point of fines. One of them is on Old Boston Post Road. Another one's going to be on West King Street, and certainly I'll take a look at these two, okay? So, we'll move forward with these. And I will inform you as to what we're going to do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I don't know if I'm not aligned here.
No, you're not.
I live at 111 Bochum Road.
Yeah.
And, you know, not only is it ugly, you know, he piled this brush, but then he puts arboretums on his side of the fence. So the brush is between the fence and the arboretum, so he doesn't see any of that. He did it to Russell Windsor the day he moved in. He started with him.
Okay.
And, you know, not only is it ugly, it's a fire hazard. I mean, if you look at all that brush piled around that corner around his pond, somebody goes by there, puts a cigarette out.
Well, I know, I know that you did call fire marshal in that regard. So, and the fire marshal then referred it over to me. So, I understand. So, those...
How is this man...
Probably 10 or 15 feet from my shed and my garage.
Yeah.
And how isn't this man, Dean, has lived in a house unfinished without a CO for seven years? That's ridiculous. And when I spoke to Mr. McAvicki about this, and he said, "Well, he tells me that he's not living there." I said, "Ask the neighbors." Everybody knows he's living there. It's horrible back there. Horrible. He's got RVs, he's got metal, something's thrown all over the place. It's along the lot line.
The house has a wireline a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that.
Burning, broken.
Yeah, that too.
I didn't bring that one up.
This is what I want. I want it fixed like you people would want it fixed because you wouldn't want it around your property either. So whatever you would do for yourself, I want you to do for my daughter.
I lived next to one for several years.
It's, you know, there's rules. And the rules are for people like me that obey the rules, not for the dumb-dumbs that are, you know, just doing whatever they want. So, either have the rules and enforce them or just get rid of them.
Understood. Thank you, Claudia.
Okay.
No, thank you. No.
Yeah, I just, I've had it.
Understood. Understood.
You know. Hi. I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
And I will look forward to progress.
Further correspondence.
That too, maybe.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Further public comment before we move on with the agenda? Is there any further? Okay. Hearing none. Why don't we go around, we'll do this, comments from the selectmen. I'll get to my comments in a bit. Scott?
So I feel compelled to not just urge, but to be sure that the Board of Police Commissioners review and take appropriate action at its next Police Commission meeting. I have to assume that each of the commissioners has read or will read the memorandum written by First Selectman Carl Fortuna and the legal opinions provided by Town Council, as well as Kerma-referred attorney James Talberg from Carstens and Talberg LLC. The responsible action taken by the First Selectman Carl Fortuna to ensure that the town be in compliance with, as well as align to state general statutes in our own town charter led to the solicitation of an additional legal opinion from our town insurer, Kerma. Attorney Talberg, referred advice, Kerma, reviewed numerous documents, correspondence, and tape coverage of the April 25, 2022 meeting. The legal opinion from Carstens and Talberg is clear and prescribed. I believe that all elected members to any commission have the responsibility to review and align with legal opinions provided by the town, its council, and the town's insurer, and their council. I will be tuned in at the next Police Commission meeting. For certain, members of a Police Commission cannot egregiously ignore sound legal advice, thus leaving the town liable as a result. Each member's thoughtful and reasoned action are needed to correct this concerning issue.
Scott, do you have any update on the high school lights?
Lights, we're moving forward. We're expecting them on July 11th. And then from there, there's a lot of coordination of efforts and we're excited and we're, have every reason to believe that that project will come to fruition and we will have lights in the fall of 2022.
We may have lights. We have to have all the parts that will light up. And I've heard there's a little bit of a... One piece of news I got is there might be a supply chain issue.
Okay.
But not with the structures. So, structures and no lights. But, no, I'm not saying that hopefully by September, that won't be an issue. So... Matt, do you have anything?
Yes, real quick, just a congratulations and thank you to all the administrators and teachers and staff and para and the public school system. School wraps up this week, navigating, you know, another challenging, long year successfully. So I really want to give my sincere thanks to everybody for all the work that they put in it. We don't see behind the scenes to keep our schools open and safe. So that's great. And on that, I mean, very successful spring sports season from our high school baseball team and softball team and lacrosse team and girls' track 4x1 relay team at New England. So, really exciting for everybody and our young people and families in Old Sable. So that's my comment on that. I'll save any comments on the Police Commission till we discuss that. And then, but in terms of police, so the Police Commission and Board of Selectmen received a memo from Chief Spira two weeks ago talking about school safety in general. And just updating us to every, you know, the coordination that goes on between superintendent and district office and the police chief. But one idea that the police chief raised in this memo was the idea of doing a gun buyback program to take weapons that are in the community that people no longer want or happen to have that they would like to dispose of. And, you know, I had the chance to sit down with him last week and ask him some questions, talk about it. But it seems just very basic risk management in a way that we could move forward to try to make the community a little bit more safer. And I would appreciate if we could have, you know, that as an agenda item at a future meeting and have the chief, and I know he's trying to get some additional information for us. But, you know, by way of background, I know Old Sable is a small town. I saw that Guilford did this in October of '21 and had over 100 weapons purchased in Guilford, you know, not too dissimilar of a community. So I think it's something that's worth it, exploring further for risk management.
Yeah, I also spoke to the chief about that and we both agreed, I mean, I have no issue with it, obviously. I don't think we're going to be buying any weapons from felons who want to use them. But you might be buying weapons from people who don't want them anymore. That could potentially be stolen at some later date. So, and then find their way into the community. I think we have to identify funding, a funding mechanism for it, which shouldn't be difficult. I have no idea what Guilford spent.
Right.
Like, what did they spend on 100 guns? Was it $5,000? Was it? I...
Yeah, and I think the chief and Captain DePerey are working on getting some information.
So, once we have an idea as to how much, happy to move that forward and see where that goes.
I'd like to piggyback on one more comment if I might. I was a school administrator. I was in the public schools for 33 years. And the chief did send that memo about the coordination services between the public schools and the town of Old Sable Police. And the detail that he put in that memo and the actions that are coordinated and followed through by both the public schools and the local police is unbelievably well-coordinated and very, very appropriate. In addition, it's something that I don't think that many other schools are doing nearly as effectively. So I think it's really impressive that he put all that information together and they're not just talking the talk, they walk the walk as well. And I appreciate that.
And some of what we are doing looks like it might be in this national gun bill that they're talking about passing in terms of school safety. So, anyway, thanks. I was also going to comment on the successful sports. I did go to the girls' lacrosse and the boys' baseball. Couple of their games. So that was fun to watch. I know they had a great season. Give you a quick update on Beaver Dam Trail. We met out there yesterday with, so... I know we talked about this at both Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, so I thought I should keep you in the loop. Some good news. FEMA, or the feds, declared Middlesex County from storm Ida a state of emergency. That's good news. That means we are eligible, not necessarily will get funding for the culvert that blew out. If you drive up Beaver Dam Trail off Kitteridge, for those of you who don't know where it is, there's this little stream. This little stream could be a one and a half million dollar project. So it was, as you can imagine, it was critical. I mean, it was great news when we found out that Middlesex County became a declared county. 75% of, you know, even if that's on the high end, 75% of a million or a million and a half is a hell of a lot of money if we're able to get it. As a result, I roped in the chief of police, our emergency management director. He is on it. He's accumulating his file for eventual submission. We met out there yesterday. What it is, is there are underground utilities from Kitteridge. And that was Frontier, EverSource, and Comcast. They're underground until they go above ground. As you go up Beaver Dam. They're underground at the point of this culvert. We had a, so yesterday was a huge coordination meeting. It's very difficult, very difficult to get utilities coordinated. So it was a really good meeting. We hope to have this out to bid in the fall. We'll see where the numbers come back. You know, it seems like, I keep hearing, I know, you know, the economy's slowing, interest rates are rising, blah, blah, blah. So now I'm hearing that there could be, the supply chain could flip. I, you know, I'll believe it when I see it, right? So that's an update on Beaver Dam Trail. Completed a bunch of sidewalks, as you saw. Lynn Street over on Route 1 and Old Boston Post Road. Couple of things. I walked, first of all, there's some sidewalks right across the street on Sheffield Street here on the north side of the street that are in very bad shape. And then there's a small section as you walk to the middle school. It's only like 20 feet, but it's like it was bad concrete or something. So I'm going to have Bill Layden fix those two areas. Small job. We also walked Maple Avenue in front of Knollwood and Fenwood. That is all asphalt. That is a massive walking, running area. So we walked that the other day to get a price. He's yet to get back to me on that. Those are all asphalt crumbling, basically sidewalks. So, anyway, just potential job. The one good thing about rising interest rates and maybe a 75 basis point increase by the Fed is our treasurer's income is significantly higher. You know, five years ago, six years ago, we were budgeting $150,000 in income based on our savings. That's when interest rates were just a little bit higher than they are now. Then they went to zero. Our income went to like $38,000 on all this money from 150, so we reduced it in the budget. And obviously, that is going to improve and will be a revenue source for the next budget cycle. So that's one of the good things. It comes from rising interest rates. And obviously, it's good for savers too. So, also with regard, okay, so finally, with regard to the Police Commission and the bylaws. Yesterday, there was, just so people are up to date. Yesterday, there was correspondence from Chairman Wilcox to me that stated, "I am in receipt of your memorandum transmitting Mr. Paulberg's opinion while he clearly states his conclusion that the bylaw amendments adopted at the Police Commission's April meeting are illegal. His reasoning, like Mr. Cronin's before him, is somewhat opaque. Equally concerning is the fact that he does not offer any guidance as to how the commission can legally accomplish what seem to me..." And, you know, that, to me, to be its perfectly appropriate goals. "Allow the public to express both satisfaction and dissatisfaction during the public comment portion of our meetings. Encourage members of the commission to seek out sources of information in addition to our chief of police. Provide guidance to commissioners on whether and how to distribute communications they receive from the public and provide an opportunity in addition to that provided by Standing Order 4.6 for individuals who for any reason are reluctant to submit a complaint to the police department or whose complaint is of such a nature that they are doubtful of the department's willingness or ability to investigate and resolve the complaint in an unbiased manner. As a former member of the Police Officers Standards and Training Council, I would expect Mr. Paulberg to be uniquely situated to assist the commission in addressing these concerns. This is to request, therefore, that you, meaning me, request Mr. Paulberg to attend the Police Commission's next regular meeting on June 27th at 7:00 PM to discuss these concerns with the commission, very truly yours, Alfred Wilcox Chair, to which I replied, 'Thank you for your correspondence. At this point, the town and its carrier have spent significant time and money to address the actions of the Police Commission. However pure your intentions, two attorneys, Michael Cronin and James Talberg, have now rendered unbiased and extremely detailed opinions as to the propriety of the bylaw changes. It should also be noted that it was you, meaning Chairman Wilcox, that asked for a second opinion to Attorney Cronin's original memorandum addressing the bylaw changes. That has now been accomplished. Your response has been to insult Town Council Mike Cronin in a public meeting outside of his presence and now to claim Attorney Talberg's five-page opinion..." and now to claim Attorney Talberg's five-page opinion is opaque when it is far from that. It is time for you as a commission member to cease acting as counsel to the commission and to promptly follow the advice of counsel as directed by Attorney Talberg, however much you may disagree. Stated in my memo, I expect the bylaw changes that were passed by the commission on April twenty fifth two thousand twenty-two will be rescinded and the previously existing bylaws will be reinstated best. And that is uh an email. That that brings everybody up to date as to where we are. Um because I'm not sure everybody in the public uh has had an opportunity to hear uh Chairman Wilcox's uh memo to me and my response to him. So um you know, we did have a huge change in the police commission, the fact that was uh pretty much the only change in the last election uh in terms of a commission and um early on in the uh commission meetings and uh I've I've spoken to Chairman Wilcox several times in my office. Uh it was requested that uh the police commission get a separate opinion from Mike Cronin and Pat McHale as to what their authority is. Um Chairman Wilcox re- recommended an attorney uh from Bircham Moses, Chris Hodgson, uh who we hired. I wanted to give the commission, a newly elected commission, a wide berth. And I did. And Chris Hodgson came in. He was excellent. I thought he was excellent. Um I was very impressed with him and your recommendation, so thank you for that. Um and uh so I believe the commission authority uh has been clarified. Uh my understanding in reading his memo and in talking to Town Council and Pat McHale is that his opinion did not vary significantly at all from what Mike Cronin and Pat McHale had previously advised the commission. As far, you know, we've now, and now we've had Mike Cronin and Pat McHale weigh in on the bylaw changes. They they consulted on um their mem- Mike Cronin's memo to the commission. Uh Pat McHale was involved in some of those discussions. Uh so those two lawyers came up with an opinion as to the bylaw changes. Not in any way to challenge what the police commission did in terms of passing the bylaws, but out of concern, truly concern that a commission was not following the advice of Town Council, the commission's council. I contacted PERMA and I said, does this expose the town? That's it. I wasn't looking for a review of the bylaws necessarily. I was concerned, does it expose the town? I think that's my obligation to investigate that. Uh whether other people think it is my obligation or not, that's, you can disagree with me, but I believe it is. Um I was referred to Attorney Talberg. I will tell you, because I've revealed this memorandum, so it's not, there's no privileged communications here at this point. I called Attorney Talberg. My conversation and my emails to him, I don't know what they say, but I don't think they're they're open to the public if anybody wants to F O I him. I said to him, I'm not looking to say whether Mike Cronin was right or wrong. I wa- I need to know if the town is exposed here. He said to me, I think it would be best if I see the whole picture. So I sent him everything and that's why I requested the bylaws from you and I emailed you not too long ago. And I sent him over. And this is what I got in response. I wasn't looking for anything in particular. I don't think, I had no agenda here, as I said all along. I've been trying to give this commission as wide a berth. And by the way, uh not always at the chief's pleasure, by the way, because I've tried to maintain a relationship and I believe we do have a good relationship, Mr. Chairman. Um and uh and the chief has somewhat disagreed with me. He he was not necessarily in favor of hiring Attorney Hodgson. Um but anyway, so be it. Here we are. Uh I would, and and I hear what you said, uh uh Dan, Mr. Walsh, Welch, Welch, sorry. Um and I I heard what you said about your career, which I, it sounds like a wonderful career.
Carl, this is about doing the right thing.
No, hold on a second. Hold on a second. If if I sought out two attorney opinions and they both said the same thing and I varied from that, query whether I could be removed from office because I am going against counsel. And that is not something I would even consider doing. Uh because when I see, I'm a lawyer, Chub's a lawyer. Uh and I do not give counsel to the town. I seek counsel. Are there, are there, is my legal, does my legal training assist me in perhaps recognizing an issue or maybe resolving an issue before I have to send it out to counsel? But when it involves matters of the town that I feel that I should not be stepping into advice, I look for counsel and tend to follow it after fully discussing it. And this issue, we may dis- reasonable people can disagree. And maybe there is a path forward, okay? But as to what has been passed and what has been proposed for those four bylaws, I believe the book is closed on that. Now, if you choose to work with Town Council or the police commission chooses to work with Town Council to make some changes, whatever it may be, so be it. He's your, he's, he's the police commission lawyer too. Uh but I don't know how much more time and money needs to be spent on this. This issue has been fully vetted. You've been talking these bylaws for six months. We've now had four, three lawyers, really four, weigh in on it. It's not a question of doing the right thing or not doing the right thing or uh people feel, I, listen. You, you know, you're you're running that commission. You do what you feel like you need to do. But I believe this issue's been fully vetted. Uh I don't know how much more we can do in terms of lawyering on this. I think these bylaws need to be uh rescinded, the original bylaws reinstated. And then if you want to work a path forward with Town Council, that's your prerogative if that's what the commission chooses. Um I have not, I want to be clear, I have not stood in the way of any of this, not. But enough is enough. So I want to move on with the agenda. Further comment?
I just want to make a comment. I think it's appropriate. Um I am not a lawyer. I have reviewed all.
Do you play one on TV?
I have played one on TV. I was a witness on stage in a play once, but um but you know, we have, I have been writing the opinions of two lawyers and do, you know, I'm I'm not in a position to say that what the police commission has done should be left in place. I think that they need to um make the corrections. The idea here, my understanding is that we're working to build a public trust in our process and our police department. And as Carl said, I think that that doesn't mean that there isn't a pathway forward, but we have to do that in a way that is not in writing saying that it is illegal and is exposing the town to this type of risk. And at the same time, I don't think that if the commission is unwilling to listen and take the opinions in writing from two different lawyers, I'm not sure if that is also doing um a disservice in terms of building the public trust in the police commission. And so I hope that they will look at this and again, I, you know, not say that I don't see that there's a path forward, but.
I would, I just will make a comment that I think that this is the time for leadership in this community, not just legalism. And I challenge the three of you as select people to actually sign some leadership and not fall back on legalism.
Okay.
I think, and that's my point, that's the point I was trying to make to you, my stuff, my.
And thank you for that. Um.
Can I make one brief comment?
Why not under public comment?
I was waiting to hear what was being said.
Well, that's the time for public comment, but Chub, as chairman, I will allow you to make comment.
My only comment is that this is number one on the agenda for our next week.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I just want to make one other uh comments from, under comments from the selectmen. Uh because I've tried to keep the board up to date on new employees, lots of new employees. The two employees in the town clerk's office are doing fabulous. We have uh two old saver presidents that we brought in. Excellent people, just so happy, I can't even tell you. Uh then uh our tax bills, uh Carol, listen, we had the entire tax office resign in the course of thirty days or so. In with tax season coming and uh you know, Carol has put her head down. Um she has a new employee uh working under her who's excellent. Uh the tax bills are going out on time.
Friday.
Friday, just so you, everybody knows, you probably get on Saturdays. And I I just, I really, look, I, you know, the, in the town clerk's office, those are two assistants. You know, Carol came in basically blind and uh so I just want to recognize you, Carol. Thanks for being here and thanks for all.
You've been so supportive. I couldn't have done it without your support.
That may be, but that may be, but you you've been thrown into, it was a very difficult situation. So a lot has transpired. Um I just want to uh thank Carol for that. Uh up in the building office, we have an, a temporary employee who, you know, whatever. And we have a new employee in the town clerk, in the town selectmen's office. Things are really working out here. I was very concerned, as you guys know, very concerned about what we might find out there, but we're finding a really excellent pool of people. So just to give you an update on that. Um all right, approval of the minutes, item number five, Board of Selectmen meeting, May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Any, did, did you have changes, Matt? No.
No, I made changes at the last.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, appointments. Matt, are you willing to be on the oversight committee still?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move Matt Puglisi's appointment to reappointment to the oversight committee. All those in favor, Matt, uh Scott, second?
Second.
All those.
Discussion.
Yeah.
On the, I just want to understand, because on the agenda it says appointment of substitute fiduciary.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, you're already appointed. Yeah, you're right. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
See accountability.
Yeah, all right, all right. I'm gonna withdraw my motion on that. Scott, second that, okay? Scott.
I second.
Yeah, so motion is withdrawn. Actually, I'm sorry about that, Matt. Thank you. Thank you for um let me get you that point on the agenda.
Thank you.
The substitute fiduciary, so Bob Fish is currently listed on the bank accounts as the fiduciary. Um and what I'd like to do is um appoint the finance director, Leanne Palladino, as the fiduciary of this fund. Okay, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Question?
Yeah.
Why Leanne versus the?
Um Leanne's her day to day. She's just gonna have a better, uh Bob, Bob had an office here.
Yeah.
The, that, the treasurer, because of its limited function, doesn't even have an office in town hall anymore. They operate via computer. I think it would be um just better controls. I honestly definitely end it.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, thank you. All right. Claudia's still here, she's not, okay. Um so using Bircham Moses, the firm that Mr. Wilcox, Chairman Wilcox, recommended with Chris Hodgson. Um they're neck, they're a very good firm. Uh we are now using them on our blight complaints. Um and we have gotten to the point where I'm one of them. So I'll tell you the property, it's on Oyster River. Oyster, no, what is it? Uh Oyster Point Road. So if you go down Great Hammock, go down Great Hammock, on the left is Oyster Point Road. There are two dilapidated houses uh that the neighbors have been complaining about for a while, wild animals living in there, uh trash being piled up by the neighbors. And so uh I've been in touch with the owner several times, tried to work with him for over a year. The problem there is he's just not going to be able to renovate them unless he raises them because they're in a flood zone, as you can imagine, all that. So um brought a blight complaint against him. Uh this Nicholas Pomati over at Bircham Moses uh has gone through the uh both states. He's kind of incorporated a little bit of the state statutory process along with our uh town code process and um we're at the point where he feels that we need to appoint a hearing officer in case someone has an objection to the fines being imposed. I don't know if you know Robert Rimmer in town. His office is right across the street and I just uh he's been popped in a few times over the years, uh doesn't really practice much in town. For a while there, he was representing some homeowners and he had some questions as to private roads and stuff like that. Very nice guy. Uh and I called him last week and I said, uh here's a thankless position. I'll pay you for your time. I don't anticipate it'll be much time at all, ever, but I need to appoint someone. The lawyer at Attorney Bircham Mo- uh Bircham Moses recommended it being an attorney. He said typically uh I did not want to do town attorney. I wanted to do someone completely independent. Um I sent him all the materials on this particular blight and said, would you be willing to serve uh if there is a hearing? And he said, yes, she's willing to do it. Uh so uh that is just a logistical hurdle that we need to get over before we can move on with this particular blight complaint. Uh as I stated, uh there are two more that I've started. One of them is at one twenty-four Old Boston Post Road. And there's gonna be another one on West King Street. Which is uh shame, because that area is improving quite a bit, but uh quite, there's a homeowner that I put on notice several times and is ignoring uh cleaning up the area and neighbors are very upset. Uh and then the ones that Claudia Way brought forward uh also may be on the list very shortly. Uh so I'd like to um, I'll make a motion that we appoint Robert Rimmer as the blight hearing officer for the town of Old Saver.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, please.
And so how long have we had the ability to move forward on blight issues? Because I felt that it was probably five years ago at Economic Development Commission that we had had a conversation with Chris Costa around blight ordinances and process and I thought that we fight, kind of felt that we couldn't move forward at that time, but maybe I'm just not remembering.
Yeah, so uh I moderated the meeting probably twelve years ago.
Okay.
The town meeting at which we passed blight ordinance, okay? It's a bit of a weak blight ordinance. It doesn't have great teeth in it.
Yeah.
So what Nick has done is he's taken that and um incorporated some other elements to it uh that are allowable via state statute to put some teeth into it.
Okay.
And uh it, there's a lot of due process in his process, uh which is great. Um he really feels it's airtight uh to do this. I hate to do it, by the way. This is the first one in ten and a half years that I've got, gone this far. I with, especially with residents, you try to work with them. The last thing you want to do is, we're not looking to make money on these properties. We are looking to have residents clean up their property, just like Claudia Way would love these people. And usually I've been able to do that. I've been able to get in touch with the homeowner and say, by the way, on West King Street, we said, can Public Works help you? I've offered pub- I've done that with several houses. Can Public Works help you clear your property? Because you clearly have too much stuff there to do it yourself. Uh and when you get to a point where you're being ignored and it's not fair to the fellow property owner. Uh, and when you get to a point where you're being ignored and it's not fair to the fellow property owners, I got a little frustrated. Um, I went in a different direction than Town Council, um, just to get a different read on things and, uh, this is a process that he came up with that he feels is airtight. Okay, but the blight complaint is out there.
Okay.
Um, all right, we already voted on that. Um, so Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, um, I think you recommended, uh, Michael Bender.
I didn't. I think that Chris did.
Okay.
I don't know if Mike's willing to.
You know, the other, I don't know that, all right, so why don't we table that? And I'll reach out to Mike Bender to see if he's willing to do this. Yeah, I don't think he was asked. I think his name came.
I think it came up that Chris was thinking about it.
Okay, all right. Um, so we'll put that on the next meeting, um, in two weeks. And, uh, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.